All right, thanks. Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Joe, call the May 10, 2022 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Inaugural Committee Meeting to order. This meeting will be conducted in person and virtually in compliance with the Governor's proclamation related to COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation of each of the subjects and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who are signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before we close in this portion of the meeting. I'll wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand virtually. Clerk, do we have anyone online that has asked to speak?
Councilmember Joe, we have no one attending virtually.
All right. And then, has anyone signed up to speak? Or does anyone have a desire to speak tonight? All right. We'll recognize Wendy Wyker. Come on up. Now, citizen comments are an important part of this process. I'm not going to go through the full litany of things, but in general, please unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes, and I will go ahead and open public comments now.
Thank you very much. Hello, councilmembers DeMichele, Hall, and Joe. For the record, my name is Wendy Wyker, Republic Services, Bellevue, 98005. Thank you for the opportunity to join your Mobility and Infrastructure Council Subcommittee Meeting this evening. I appreciate your taking the time to dig deeper into the two options you have before you regarding the city's next collections and landfill diversions partner. I know by now you've probably reviewed both proposals and read the staff reports as well as my emails and probably more. I'm also confident you've likely run some numbers and done some math to compare the two choices you have regarding customer rates in the coming years, especially since we now find ourselves in challenging economic times with the highest inflation rates we've seen in over 40 years. So, given the few minutes I have with you this evening, the main points I want to make are these. First, it's clear from your community survey and citizen input that Issaquah residents and recent weather and natural disasters demand we all take bold climate action sooner rather than later. Second, I want you to know that an all-EV fleet in Issaquah is not a risky endeavor, but a real possibility, given the advances in truck technology, the ability to partner with PSC to develop private EV charging infrastructure, and the capacity to expand on existing trucking company partnerships like the one we have with Peterbilt. And finally, I want to talk about math. Given the choice before you, the $1 million difference per year between the two proposals means there's a $12 million delta over the life of the contract. That gap gives you the opportunity to work with Republic Services to focus on EV fleet deployment. It also means you probably don't need to make changes to your contract administration fee, which means you can preserve those critical funds for other city climate action initiatives, social justice programs, or much-appreciated parks projects. So, back to climate action. Republic Services has been practicing and delivering sustainability programs for decades. We are the only company in the waste industry that is a signatory to the science-based initiative that commits us to reduce Scope 1 and 2 greenhouse gas emissions 35% by 2030, increase recovery and circularity of key materials 40% by 2030, and increase beneficial use of biogas 50% by 2030. We do that in the almost 2,000 local communities we serve in 42 states we operate. I can assure you, these national goals come to fruition and are measured at the local level in the recycling and landfill diversion work my teammates and I do every day. We measure our progress on these goals with our direct recycling education and outreach to our single-family, multifamily, and commercial customers in a variety of languages and with a variety of tools to maximize diversion and keep the recycling stream as clean as possible. We have a local virtual call center with 26 Puget Sound-based representatives standing by to assist customers with right-sizing their collection carts, getting information about reducing contamination in their blue and green bins, or providing resources about our neighborhood recycling events and locations. The highlight of our work is when we can host groups at our recycling center in South Seattle so visitors can see firsthand how our recycling infrastructure works and why it is so important to recycle right. At the national level, we're doubling down on our commitment to climate action by developing recycling end markets with our Coming Polymer Center in Las Vegas and building state-of-the-art organics processing facilities in California that run on solar power and create renewable energy or compost at the end of the line. Now, for a brief overview of Republic Services' very real ability to deliver an all-EV fleet in Issaquah. In the last two weeks, my leadership team and I have been looking at calendars and confering with our colleagues at PSC and Peterbilt. Based on our experience with putting a proven reliable fleet in Boise these last two years, the Republic Services EV team is confident we can start deploying EVs within two years in the city of Issaquah. It is incumbent on us, not the city, to figure out the electric charging stations that would come with an EV fleet, and we've already got some locations in mind. Together with you, Peterbilt, and PSC, we can absolutely deploy an EV recycling, organics, and garbage truck fleet. Not pilots, but actual quiet, efficient, environmentally-friendly EV trucks running Issaquah routes up and down hills in an all manner of Pacific Northwest weather. So, finally, let me close with the math. Our proposal and rate schedule reflects the true cost of service for each material stream and customer segment. Our multifamily commercial rates were not inflated to subsidize residential ones. We knew that rates were going to increase between 50 and 80% based on current market trends, including limited labor and supply chain challenges, as well as recent updates to legacy collections contracts. We wanted to be competitive with the core essential collections and outreach work we do every day and leave room for the flexibility to make EVs a cost-effective option from the start. We also factored in Issaquah's forecasted growth in the coming decades. We did not include a retail store because we saw in your resident survey that this service was only somewhat important to residents. Ditto expanded recycling for things like Styrofoam and CFL bulbs. Since we saw outreach, EVs, and continued weekly service was very important to your residents, we focused on that and built our rates around those key deliverables. Issaquah is one of my favorite cities, and I know my company is positioned to serve you well in the years ahead. On behalf of Republic Services and my Puget Sound area coworkers, thank you for your consideration. It would be our honor and privilege to partner with you on the daily essential services we do, as well as the critical climate action work we have to do in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyker. Anyone else in the room that would like to offer public comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll check back in with Deputy Clerk to see if anyone has logged on and might want to contribute to tonight's proceeding.
Councilmember Joe, I see no virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Well, we always encourage public comment, and you can always email the City Council on any of the issues that are before this committee tonight or other issues that might come before the city. We do like to receive those emails, and they are important comments we consider in our deliberations. All right, we'll move on to the agenda for tonight's meeting. And the first item is a review of the solid waste contract. I understand that Jeff Brown is here, and our Deputy Administrator, Andrew Snyder, will also be here to add color and answer comments. And also, our Finance Director is also online, as I understand it, available to answer comments as well. So, I'll hand it over to you at this point for the presentation.
I'm Jeff Brown with Epicenter Services, and my partner Jeanette and I have been working on this procurement for almost, actually, not a year, but we've been working on it since late last summer. We're now at the point where a contract has been brought forward for review. We had one council meeting, and now we're back here to talk about the issues that came up and to talk about getting further direction. Next slide, please. Got this work? And next slide. So, the three different options are available here. One is to basically concur with the revised contract that includes all the additions and deletions since the last meeting. Another option is to direct us to add or delete other options that were included in the RFP, or even other contract changes, and to go back and work on those and come back, or to initiate discussions with one of the other two vendors that submitted proposals. Next slide. So, the background, I think, as everybody probably remembers, we were back here at a study session on April 26, and there was quite a bit of discussion. I think it was almost two hours of discussion, and we had quite a few comments raised and suggestions. And we've gone back and prepared the staff report, which has a lot more detail than this presentation will. I'm not going to go through the entire staff report, but we've brought back the information and hopefully addressed the concerns and questions that were raised. Next slide. One of the issues that's come up is electric vehicles. What's reasonable, what we can commit to, and how to best implement electric vehicles in Issaquah. So, at this point, we have the commitments. There's already an electric vehicle right now that's being piloted, and that's in the current contract. There are, in the new contract, all support vehicles will be electric. New thing that's been committed to is for Recology to provide two automated side loaders, and those are for residential routes primarily, by the end of 2025. And Recology has basically committed and has the production slot to get that vehicle. And I should add as a sidebar here, a lot of times, depending on what sort of vehicle you're looking at and whether it's vaporware, or whether it's actually a real production item that's coming out, the lead time on these is about 16 months. And so, you'll see in our kind of laying out a schedule, there's some overlapping dates in there, and part of that is to accommodate both a decision-making process and ordering lead time and wanting to get something on the ground sooner rather than later. So, the commitment at this point that we've written in is to additional electric vehicle, electric route trucks by the end of 2025. And then, what we had planned was to basically have the discussion in 2024, because we think the market for electric vehicles is going to mature quite a bit between now and then, see what the range of vehicles are. You know, there's a fair number of, there's a lot of interest in there right now and a lot of experimentation with side loaders and even rear loaders. But the fact is, in Issaquah, there are three different types of trucks that are being run. There's the residential route trucks can be done with side loaders typically. The commercial stream, the dumpsters that are out there for multifamily and for commercial, are front loaders, and they're the hardest trucks to try to source for electric vehicles because they have an intense hydraulic load. I mean, it's a tough route to be on. You might do two to three trips a day to the transfer station. It's the worst case for trying to do an electric vehicle. And then, there's drop box trucks, roll-off trucks, that are hauling the big, car-sized boxes to the transfer station and back and maybe doing eight round trips a day. So, they get a lot of mileage, not as many starts and stops, but they're an application where you're looking for total distance and mileage. So, the plan is, in 2024, we'll have a much clearer vision. What sectors can be collected? What streams can be collected? What's the optimal vision for ramping this up? And I think there's very clear commitment on the part of both city staff and Recology to work a path forward that does this as cost-effectively and as quickly as possible that is prudent and is not just trying to be on the bleeding edge. So, what we would look for, and what's written in the revised language in the contract, is to have the discussions in mid-2024 and phase them in. In addition to the two trucks that are starting at the end of 2025, start bringing things in in the first quarter of 2026, which, if you look at it, is actually, another way of looking at this is a ramped-up implementation where two trucks go out, maybe fourth quarter of 2025, more vehicles show up in 2026, first quarter of 2026, and on. So, that's when we expect most of, through all it would be, and that would allow the city to hopefully avoid the bleeding edge in having service interruptions or things not working out as planned.
Great. Mr. Brown, could you comment on the second bullet point? All electric support vehicles by start of the new contract will be on our streets. What does that look like? Are we talking about just the vehicles that the Zero Waste people are using? Is it the delivery trucks for bins? What kind of conversation have you had there?
That's actually a good question. So, it is both. It's actually having all the staff that are doing, like the sustainability programs and the customer service would be driving electric vehicles. And then, also, the container delivery trucks would be box trucks. And so, that's going to cover carts primarily. And I don't know if there are actually plans to be able to deliver detachable containers on electric chassis or not. Do you know off the top of your head?
No, we're looking at that technology.
Okay. So, that's not a commitment straight out of the box.
Okay. Yeah. Great. Thank you for that clarification. I see there's a question from Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. On the first bullet point, I thought that I heard that this pilot that we're doing right now with the electric collection truck, that there have been some problems, and I was wondering if you could go into depth with that a little bit more. Are we having trouble on the hills? Are we, you know, it seems like that is not working out as well as it could. Is there any detail that could be offered?
I would have to defer to Recology because I-
If you could step up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, to answer your question, the current electric rear loader trucks that we're using right now, some of the challenge, one, that they are not domestically made, so a lot of the parts are proprietary, and then also the parts that are not proprietary are generally European parts. So, from a supply chain standpoint, that's been a little of a challenge. And the battery longevity to the trucks that we're running currently in the city of Seattle, we've had to replace the batteries already since receiving these trucks at the end of 2019 and beginning of 2020. The technology is improving significantly on the battery side, but that has been a little of a challenge. With the truck, the automated side loader will be receiving this summer. This was a domestic company, Auto Car, and so, that'll be something we'll be sharing in detail with you all in terms of the differences in the supply chain, how quickly we can service it, and there'll be a lot of learnings on our part. We'll be able to apply downstream with the trucks.
And just before you depart, could you just identify yourself? We know you, we've seen you many times, but just so the note taker, when they're reviewing this, can make a good record.
Anthony Brocato, General Manager, Recology, King County.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then, the next page or next slide. And this, this is inclement weather. I think it's the next slide in that. Voila. So, there were a number of questions at the last council meeting about this, and we've provided in the staff report both the current Recology contract language, the language in the proposed Recology contract, and the language in some Mammoth's contract. Basically, the new policy is a bit more robust. It's very similar, but basically, if materials are missed due to snow, then double the materials are picked up the following week. And I would like to make just an editorial comment on that. One is the level of standard, a level service standard that used to be in place would be to try to do bump days where you then run the routes the next day, and then you bleed over into Saturday, and nobody really knew when to put things in and when to put things out. But there's also sustainability implications to that. You're running trucks scattershot all over the city to try to pick up sections of routes, and, you know, maybe this part of a hill is accessible, maybe not, and then you have to come back the next day. And admittedly, not everybody's going to be happy with just setting the materials out the next week, but it is actually the most environmentally efficient way to handle materials as opposed to running around, trying to just catch up and bumping pieces of routes one or two days forward. So, I actually think it's a good thing. And then, community collection sites will be put in place if four or more consecutive days of non-service happens, so people at least have a safety valve for overflow if they don't choose to hold on to the materials and they really need to get rid of something. And then, if it's mixed, if it's missed two days in a row, then would go into that system of doing essentially a bump day where you try to, you know, pick it up, but it wouldn't roll over into the weekends. So, we're trying to accommodate as much service as we can get, and hopefully that addresses the questions that were raised on that.
Okay. If I could just step in here, I'll just ask Deputy Administrator Snyder if you could take a couple notes. One, if we do adopt the contract as presented tonight, I would like the administration or Public Works to get together with Recology to work on a plan for placement of those dumpsters so that we have an agreement as to the location, an agreement as to who will staff those locations, and whether there'll be police or other city personnel that'll be involved, or whether it will be an endeavor solely handled by Recology. And it's not directly a contract term, so to speak, but just something that will help us in the event that we do have an inclement weather event. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. So, the next slide is, addresses ICAMP, and I was not, this was Gary's, he's the one that handled most of this, so I have to admit, I'm out of my depth. But I would like to point out, the first comment item on here is Recology committing to have a full-time waste zero specialist. And that is actually really big because a lot of the existing contracts from different cities, particularly on the east side, have requirements to do a number of things, and staffing usually ramps up, and then there's a fluctuation of staff available for any particular city, because, of course, they're servicing multiple cities. This is big because this is actually just a staff person that is completely dedicated to Issaquah. So, we would see that as a major support function for the city's activities in the future and a definite step forward. We did spend time, the second bullet, on really trying to figure out the best approach to dealing with contamination. And part of that is concerns over when it's appropriate to look in a container or to observe a container being dumped. There are some legal issues with that, and so, there's a little bit of finessing and how to interface with the public, how to get, how to observe what's happening on the route, but still get information back to people in a timely manner, provide feedback. So, there's work on refining that. There's additional targeted outreach to multifamily commercial customers with low diversion. And then, I think there's a really big interest that's probably been bottled up a bit about leveraging the use of the storefront, and now that we're, I shouldn't say post-pandemic, the end may be in sight, or it's an oncoming locomotive, one of the two. But there's a facility there. It can be leveraged to do a lot more public education events, so that's a positive. Next slide, please. And then, for customer service, we did have some discussions about the best way to start to develop a base of metrics, and one of the ideas here was to just start doing the periodic, in this case, it's every other year, do a customer satisfaction survey, and of course, it would identify issues, gather customer suggestions, and provide a baseline for areas of focus, but it also provides a record for trend analysis, you know, so that you can go back and sort of start comparing over a period of time how they've performed with respect to earlier times, and to actually do a real survey and do that as part of the management of the contract. And then, as I mentioned, there are other, that's the end of when I'm going to talk about the specific items. There's a bunch of items in the staff report, and when we get to questions, we can follow up any questions that relate to those items. So, at this point, as I said before, and this next slide, by the way, on options, the first is to concur with our approach and the revisions that we've presented here. The second is to negotiate other contract changes, and the third is to begin discussions with other proponents. Next page, please. And the administration recommends that the city complete the development of a new ten year contract with Recology for council approval at the next regular business meeting. And next page and questions.
I'll open up for questions from the committee. Mr. Brown, thanks for the presentation and sticking with us throughout this entire process. One of the items that was requested from the council during our committee, or during our last meeting discussing this topic, was some information on the qualitative scoring for the contract. And the report has a few of those scores in there, and I wanted to focus on the customer service score that was put out, if you recall it. And if you could, it seemed to me that the scores varied quite widely by the evaluation that the committee came up with. Could you comment on why some of those scores might have been high and why some might have been low?
This is Deputy City Administrator Snyder. I think I can speak to that a little bit.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, I'm looking at the, I'm referring to the study session materials, which are linked to from your packet. There's an attachment on scoring results from the last study session on this topic, so if you want to follow me, then that's where I am. So, your question is specifically about the customer service component of the scoring. So, there was an evaluation component that addressed customer service, responsiveness to issues, and the call center approach. And the evaluation team did a very extensive evaluation of the proposals received. They not only read the responses that were provided to them, but they also conducted reference interviews and even did interviews of the respondents, the vendors responding. And in addition to that, they also toured facilities. And so, in taking all of that information together, one of the concerns that they had, or at least what Recology seemed to do better than the other responding vendors, was that they had a well-staffed customer service team and call center. They had more representatives than it seemed their competitors did. They scored higher when it came to the references on how they responded to customer service complaints, and so, that's really where we saw Recology excel versus the other two vendors. You'll see from the scoring sheet that Recology scored 37, Republic Services scored 17, and Waste Management scored 32, considering all of those factors.
Great. Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. I was really pleased that we got to see these exact scores, and it did say that there was no, for example, sustainability, innovation, equity, community outreach, and education. Those weren't broken down into separate scores. It was all together. So, but I was really interested in some of the comments that followed the scoring about their commitment to equity. Can you go into more detail about that?
I don't know that I can address equity specifically. I know that what we found were strengths in the community outreach and education and the sustainability component, but I don't know that I can speak to equity directly. If council would like to ask Recology to respond, they are here and able to do that.
Yes, if you're able or would like to comment on the equity issue, we would like to hear more information.
Logan Harvey, our Government and Community Relations Manager for Recology, King County. A pleasure to be with you all. I think one of the big highlights for us from the equity piece is that all of our employees are employee owners. So, 100% of the profits that come back into the company go back to the shareholders, which are our employees. We're not publicly traded. Nobody else can buy stock in the company. It comes right back to us. And so, I think that that is a really unique piece. We're the really only holler nationally that does this, and it's a unique thing that really creates a sense of pride in our community and ensures to council that the revenue that's generated from your city is going back to people that live in your community and to employee owners. We- your community, and to employee owners. We have employee owners from a broad swath of different locations. When you come to our MRF, our Materials Recovery Facility, we don't hire any temps. Everybody is full-time employees, they're all employee owners, they're all union employees. We provide a lot of training opportunities for them to continue to move up the chain. We're starting to develop a, our own CDL school, so that people can start as a sorter, and work their way up to being a driver, which is a very high-paying job. So, for us, the focus is to constantly, we, we also do a number of DAI trainings through Recology, harassment trainings, all these kinds of things, to really make sure we focus on it. We're also the first hauler in the region to make Martin Luther King Day, a work day, to, off-work day for our employees, is something that they asked for, and we were happy to do. So, just in all these ways, we kind of make it part of our ethos to, to make sure that we can work with our employees, or our employee owners. We're all in this together, and we're all part of that same team. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Other questions? Okay, the chair has another question. I promise it'll probably be my last one. We talked about the administrative fee, and we were, had some options in terms of the overall percentage that we set on that contract. The idea, as I understand it, was to keep the overall revenue the same, and we could do that because the rates were going a little bit higher. There was some discussion in our last meeting as to what that revenue might be used for, but as I understand it, that really is a question for the budget, and not necessarily a programming thing that we would do as part of this contract. Can you comment on that, Deputy Administrator?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Joe, for the opportunity to address that, because I know that was a big point of discussion at our last meeting. So, yes, the proposal that the administration had at the study session was to have the administration fee go from 9%, which I believe is what it is in our current contract, to 6%. Due to the increase in rates, it would give us the same amount of dollars, real dollars per year for those programs. I think that what we heard from council was a desire to really talk about where are those revenues going, what projects would that fund, are we giving up on revenue that could do some really good work in sustainability, or perhaps in, in human services, which are the two categories of spending we use that revenue for now. And so, you know, it really, we learned also since that discussion, that we do not need to set the administrative fee with this contract, that that is something that we can do in the fall. And so, it seems like we would want to have that discussion on budget, and programming, and work plan, and how we use our revenues during our budget discussions. And that seems like a better time to have conversations about what the sustainability programs might look like, how we would pay for them. So, the administration asks that we postpone this conversation about the administrative fee, until we're better prepared to have that conversation, until we have more information on what the sustainability program might look like next year, how we might pay for that, et cetera. And so, we were asking council to adopt this contract without addressing the administrative fee question, because I think we'd be better prepared to do that in the fall, when we have those budget discussions.
Thank you very much. Are there other questions from the committee, before I open it back up for public comment? Okay, seeing none. We have a tradition of opening it up for a public comment after a presentation, and questions from the council, so I'll ask if there's anyone online, deputy clerk, that might want to make public comment on the subject of the solid waste contract.
Councilmember Joe, Connie Marsh is online, and would like to make public comment. Ms. Marsh, I'm now making you a panelist. You should see the option to unmute, and you
And then, go out and hit those hotspots of concern that we have, which is like, what, multifamily housing, bear-proof garbage cans, those people who illegally dump, or something like that, that's more specific than having somebody who, what, can they just work in the retail store all day long, and that would be the dedicated person? I don't really understand what the function of that person is. And those seem to be some of the hotspots of garbage that we have. When you look at our statistics, effective recycling over time, they have gone down under this company instead of getting better. So, to continue on with the company where the statistics of effective recycling has gotten worse, unless you have a drastic change in your contract, and you mandate something different, you're going to get the same downward trend in, in our waste stream. So, our goal is to reduce our waste stream, I think. I am not sure that this contract puts us toward that end goal. If you're raising the rates, what is the support to the people who cannot afford that, that may be in our affordable housing units that we already exist? So, I don't understand what the system is to help out in that situation. So, commercial dumpsters in poor condition, again, are a consistent issue, and that they are not covered, and the lids don't close, and they aren't easily exchanged out, has been a long-term, multi-year problem that I don't see addressed in this contract. Also, I love people who pick up my own garbage personally, I just don't know that the system is good enough to give them accolades and want to pay them more money. So, thank you.
Thank you, Connie Marsh, appreciate your comments. Anyone else online that would like to add public comments to our discussion?
No, Councilmember Joe, there are not.
Anyone in the room that would like to add public comments to this topic? Mr. Logan, go ahead.
Thank you. Once again, Logan Harvey, Recology King County, I'm our Government Relations, Community Relations Manager. Make sure we get the name for the record.
I'm sorry about that. I'm often called Joe Russell, so, excuse me.
Well, yeah, I've got three first names. I'm Logan Michael Harvey, so it's always confusing. Substitute teachers always called me Harvey, and I don't know why it's different. But anyway, I'll go on with my comments. Wanted to address some of the comments in the video with our waste zero specialist. It is not a store employee whatsoever. This is somebody whose task was specifically going out to multifamily properties and commercial properties. As you saw, every single year, we're going to visit 100% of the recycling bins for multifamily and commercial to check for contamination. If there is contamination, that will be followed up with monthly visits to that, until that, that situation is solved. That, solving that situation means we're going to meet with the property managers, meet with the business owners, and work with them to, to address the issue. So, for multifamily, that looks like providing door hangers, or recycle-right bags on every single door. We have a slotted lid program that we've piloted in the city of Sea-Tac, that's reduced contamination in multifamily properties, in some cases from 30, 40% down to below 5. This is extremely successful program that we may be able to bring here as well. With commercial, it looks like working with the managers, training their employees, and getting them correct on, on how to recycle. As far as diversion, the city has a long way to go in improving its diversion rates. The goal of 70% by 2030 is impressive, it's ambitious, and it's something that we're excited to partner with you on. We have, in our list, we're developing target lists of, of businesses and multifamily that have large volumes of garbage, and little to no recycling. So, we're going to go out, talk to these people, bring recycling to them, educate them on the fact that they could save money through that system, because recycling is offered as a free service, garbage is expensive. If we move the material over, then they're going to see a cost saving. So, we will go in person, meet with them, and we're hoping to increase that number. Happy to chat with staff about kind of what deliverables look like on that, so that we can ensure that, that is constantly going. But in our contract, and in our proposal, we're going to have monthly reports to staff on how our diversion and contamination program is going. And that's something that they can bring to you, you can always meet with me, and we can bring that up as well. The stores are an additional unit of sustainability and opportunity. And, you know, it's interesting to hear that they weren't so high-valued in the contract, or in the, in the survey, because when we were here at Salmon Days, every single person came up and asked us when the store was reopening, every, to a man. Every single first person came up and said, "When is the store coming back? When is the store coming back?" They're, the city was getting calls and asking us when it's coming back. So, I think it really is a beloved piece of the community. And this is a unique place where people can bring batteries, they can bring styrofoam, they can bring fluorescent light bulbs, they can clear out their electronic devices. And it's a unique spot that's right here in the city, for them to bring their material to. It's also a place where we do diversion education. People can purchase bulk items like shampoo, conditioner, dish soap, all these kinds of things, and try to reduce their waste. And it's how we build that culture of diversion that I think the city is really looking for. The last thing I'd like to point out is that we've committed specifically, in our, in our new language, to bringing electric trucks here. We have two guaranteed debris be here in 2025. No other hauler that's, that's proposed has done that level of commitment, not a single one. And we're going to have our pilot truck here within the next few months, probably before the end of the year, before this current contract's out. That pilot program's going to give us the opportunity to really know what that truck looks like in the city of Issaquah, address any problems before it comes to a head, and then really prepare for those new EVs that we're going to be bringing to you. And we're so excited to partner with you on this, this new project. And then in 2024, we can meet, discuss, and look at bringing potentially more, if that's what the city and Recology want to do together. So, thank you, appreciate your time.
Mr. Harvey, before you step down, do you have any comments you'd like to add with respect to the billing question that was brought up? People like the convenience of being able to do everything electronic these days, and I'll give you an opportunity to add some color to that.
Absolutely. And I know my general manager can, can add additional color to this. We had a data breach with a third-party system, and so this resulted in us having to, to stop that opportunity for residents for, for a period of time. We've brought that back. We communicated directly with residents through billing inserts and, and online communications, to try to make sure that they were aware of how to do it. Our customer service team has been fielding calls and bringing people back into that automated payment system. It was really unfortunate that that happened. We worked directly with the city to do it, but again, that was a third-party breach. We're working with Wells Fargo, which is a pretty well-respected company in terms of their data privacy. There's other places where they're not the best, but, but they're, they're quite high-quality. And so, yeah, we're, we believe that we've solved it, and if there's additional comments, and I'd invite Anthony to come up as well. Other questions or thoughts?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Brocato, General Manager, Recology King County. Thank you, Logan. I don't have too much more to add to that. We know that, obviously, the data breach was unexpected, so we worked very quickly, working with Wells Fargo, to, to work that out, knowing that there's an opportunity to enhance the, the technology background and platform, and that's something we're, we're working on. We don't have more specifics in terms of a timeline, but that, that is a high priority for us, moving forward.
Great, thank you. I do want to talk a little bit about the low-income opportunities for a, a rate reduction. And I'll go ahead and say a few things, and those out in the audience can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but in general, I understand that, that it's a policy and a program that's typically set up by the city for eligibility. And then, the cities will typically manage that list of people that are eligible for the price break, and then convey that on to the hauler for adjustment to the rates. Is that typically how it works? Mr. Brown?
I can address that. So, usually, what has happened in King County is that cities that manage utility billing systems for water sewer, or stormwater, whatever other function, often have low-income and/or low-income senior discounts that are tied in with the overall billing system. So, like, if there's a 15% discount, basically what we do in the contract is we say, "You match whatever the city, city system is." City changes it to 20% in a particular year, that's exactly what gets transferred over to the hauler. In cities that don't have utility billing systems, a lot of times, the city and the hauler would agree on, you know, are we going to use, like, property tax exemption, that whole criteria process? So, some, all somebody would need to do is to come to them and say, "Here's my property tax, my county property tax exemption, so I want a discount," and they'll get it. What often happens is, the contractor, hauler, contractor, doesn't typically want to make their own judgments, they want a touchstone that says, "Yeah, this is the criteria, they meet this criteria," okay, they get the discount. So, that's baked into the contract right now. Addressing the, what I heard at the last council meeting, if there were a desire to go beyond that, and offer additional discounts, there's the opportunity to do that through the administrative fee. And basically, I think at least one city has used the, part of the administrative fee to pay down the bills during a transition. I can't actually remember when that was, I know I've done it. And that would be part of your budget discussion, again, is there's this new contract coming in, do we want to have a, an additional discount program for the first year of the program, or do we want to rely on people downsizing their containers if they, if they want to save money? You know, what are the implications of that? And that can be a budget discussion, and then the hauler would implement whatever you tell them to.
Okay, thank you. If memory serves, I think that was Auburn that used their utility fund to pay down when they changed, when they got a new contract, but I'd have to look.
Yeah, both, so the, the other wrinkle on here that we had talked about in the last contract cycle in Issaquah, was actually setting up a solid waste utility. So, Kirkland and Auburn, and Renton, all have their own solid waste utilities, and so they're in complete control. They pay wholesale rates to the hauler, they do whatever they want on the front end of the retail side. And we did not put that into this current contract for Issaquah.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay, we're supposed to open up for a discussion from the committee for comments, and then decide what actually we want to take in the future. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Jeff, thank you. Gary, I know you're out there watching, so thank you very much. Andrea, Recology. Wendy, thank you. Connie, thank you for providing public comment. Everyone else who's touched this policy, appreciate you very much. I'm feeling really good with where we're at, with the administration recommendation at this point. I think a number of the concerns and points of interest were highlighted, or points of interest from our last council discussion were highlighted very detail, in a detailed manner, in the memo and in the presentation, so I appreciate that. That's why I didn't have any questions. I genuinely feel very good about where we're at right now. Recology, thank you for answering Connie's questions about billing and multifamily diversion, recycling effectiveness, commercial container lids, and low-income assistance. So, I just wanted to make sure, you know, we did address that, so I appreciate, I appreciate that very much. There are a couple things that come to mind that make me very comfortable with this process, and that is, well, the first one is, not having to transition between haulers is very compelling to me. I think Republic Services put together a very attractive offer, and it's hard to turn down an EV fleet right away. I mean, we're a very environmentally-focused, climate-focused council. But I put, I also put a very high premium on staff and their hard work in this space, and there would really have to be major concerns, or an incredibly compelling offer, to meet my threshold of wanting to, to change the staff recommendation at that point. And that threshold hasn't been met for me quite yet. So, again, feeling good about the approach on inclement weather, too. Appreciate the expanded approach on that. I feel like we've done our due diligence in that space, and covered all our bases. I'd like to see that there are new collectibles for the Gilman Village store, which I agree is very, is a, is a community treasure. I I don't get my shampoo there, but I do get my dish soap. I, that's where I draw the line. The new waste zero specialist that would be focused on contamination reduction and diversion here in Issaquah solely is also very compelling to me, very much in line with our Issaquah Climate Action Plan. And I think something the community should be really proud of. I think the updated electric vehicle approach is in line with the council discussion that we had a few weeks ago, too, in terms of kind of creating a ramp to that, but ensuring that the technology and the innovation is at a place where it can support the, the unique geography of Issaquah, as Councilmember DeMichele mentioned, with hills. You know, we're, we're a city in the valley and in the hills, and that, that can be difficult. So I, I appreciate the need to want to make sure the innovation is there and tested in this kind of city. And was there anything else on that I wanted to say? And that we'll have, you know, two residential collection trucks by the end of 2025, and then also coming together between the city and Recology to put together kind of a more thoughtful plan and approach for, you know, how we want to accomplish that runway that I spoke about. Other than that, it being an employee-owned company is also really compelling to me. And for those reasons, I'm feeling very good about where we're at. I'd be curious what the other members of the committee think. And then maybe after our comments to Deputy City Administrator, you could speak to, I know there's been one other committee meeting. I haven't watched all of it yet, but I know they had a discussion about whether or not the items they talked about, I think it was Title 18 they were talking about, should end up on the consent calendar or on regular business for an upcoming. So maybe you could speak to kind of what their thinking was on that, so we can have a discussion about that, too. But those are my comments about, Jeff, thank you. Thank you, thank you very, very much. And those are my comments about this agenda. Thanks.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. I, too, am really comfortable with the administrative recommendation. I thought it was a very good and very thorough process. And Recology, obviously, scored very high on that process. I was, I wanted to respond to Connie Marsh's comments. I thought she had a really good point about what are we going to do to support low-income residents who may be hurt by higher rates. And I do think that using that administrative fee would be a good plan, but we will take that up under budget deliberations. But I do think that we've got to keep that in mind. One thing that we need to remember is any of the contract proposals, any of them, if we selected them, the rates were going to go up under any circumstances. So it's something where we, I think we need to be very careful about how we message it with the community and then how we support those individuals who will really be hurt by this increase. I, of course, live in a multifamily resident, residence. I say that over and over again because this is one area of where I think our experiences differ between single-family residents and multifamily in terms of their, you know, garbage collection. So I did take part this last week in one of the online classes that Recology offers. I, I thought, "I'm going to find out what this is about," and it was very, very good. Short and sweet, which I think is really the way to go. It was about 20, 25 minutes, and it was about how to reduce harmful chemicals and, you know, reduce toxic chemicals in your household, followed up by a list of resources and links. And, you know, you could send the links on to friends and family and so forth. So I think that I, while I understand Ms. Marsh's idea that we need to send people out, that's very true, but in multifamily, that is difficult. It's difficult because you're dealing with a homeowners association, and you're also dealing, at least in, in my complex, with many people that work all day long. Schedules are different. The pandemic has really made that even more chaotic. And so going out and talking to people is sometimes much more difficult than offering them an online option. I, too, am a big huge fan of the Recology stores. And I go there all the time and drop off my used batteries and all kinds of things. So in terms of the electric vehicles, I think I expressed myself at the last meeting. I, I appreciate the urgency that we heard from Councilmember Hunt. I really do, because there is definitely urgency. We all understand that. But on the other hand, we do live in a unique place where we have valleys and hills and really steep hills. And then I appreciated your comments about the parts coming from overseas and the supply chain issues that we have. And so electric vehicles are, it's an emerging market. And whenever you have an emerging market, you need to be a little bit more cautious. And I think that's where we are. We're kind of like, let's balance being cautious with the urgency of the need. And I think we need to proceed, you know, very patiently, I guess is the word, forward, knowing that we've got to get there. So I am comfortable with the proposal that was put forth tonight in terms of, of starting to get there in 2026 and getting good feedback on what's happening with our fleet. So, so I do want to appreciate, Wendy, thank you for being here, and thank you for helping us have a really good discussion. I do appreciate your participation. But I'm very comfortable going ahead with Recology's proposal and recommending that we send that forward to the full council.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. I'll echo most of the comments that, that have been, have been put forward. I, I am also comfortable with the direction that we're going. I, I think that, well, I listened to the K4C presentation today. It was put together by Executive Constantine. And his message was, "Yeah, things are not looking great, but we need to turn it around by constantly pressing and trying to change our behavior and try to modify what we're doing." And I think that by having an EV fleet that's going to be coming in on a schedule that's going to look at the reasonableness of our terrain and, and what can really be managed here, we're, we're keeping our, our finger on the, on the button to continue to press forward with that innovation to try to change what we're doing here. So I'm comfortable with the way that the fleet is, is lined up for potentially rolling out and discussing all the ins and outs with the staff as, as the technology improves. Also, the same message of, of having us constantly challenge ourselves, having the zero-waste specialist that is going to be visiting the multifamily places. And, you know, as Mr. Harvey pointed out, the, the specialist will potentially do ramped-up contact, depending on if they were able to make contact and they see changes, or if no changes have occurred, then maybe they step up and do the door hangers, or maybe they step up and do, you know, the, the recycled bags or whatever other items can address the specific behavior that needs to be, you know, modified so that the diversion rate can improve. And so I think that's, that's pretty impressive. I want to thank everyone that's been involved with this process. And I, I know that Recology put a lot of time and effort in this. I appreciate your efforts. Mr. Brown, you keep saying you're going to retire, but you keep coming back. I hope that someday you find retirement and peace, in retirement, sir. Wendy Wyker, thank you for your comments and your presentation. We appreciate having options and the ability to review different ideas along the way and discussing those ideas. So thank you for taking the time to, to come here tonight. I'll hand it over to Deputy Administrator Snyder. Do you have any thoughts or guidance you could give us on where we should be placing this on the agenda and our criteria we might be using for making that decision?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Joe. In terms of direction needed tonight, I think that you have answered our first question, which is, would you like to make any modifications? Would you like to get us to pursue another vendor? Or are you comfortable as we've proposed it? And I hear what you're saying, that we're, you're comfortable as proposed. And so what we would like to do is have a little bit of time to clean up the contract language and really finalize it, since it's been a quick turnaround since our last study session. And, and so when we return to council, I think that's a question that we're happy to hear what your recommendation is, if you feel comfortable putting it on consent or if you would prefer for it to go on regular business. Of course, if it was on regular business, there would be a staff presentation that would accompany the item. In terms of what the other committee was comfortable with, I think we have a council that's fairly comfortable with the consent agenda and referring things to the consent agenda. And so we heard that at the committee meeting last week, the, the last committee that we had. So they're comfortable with it. That said, as you know, this is kind of a multi-step process. And so the committee, you may recommend that it goes on consent, if that's what you're comfortable with. And then council leadership may, may change their mind. They may decide to pull it off from consent and put it on regular business. We may get additional questions as we near, you know, this item coming before council for a final decision that may cause it to pull down, or one of your fellow council members may request that it's pulled down. So it is a multi-step process. We're happy to hear your recommendation and move that forward and have that discussion with council leadership as well. But we, we'd love to hear what your perspective is, and I, I would, I would guess that your fellow council members would like to hear what your recommendation is as well.
Great. Any comments or thoughts on that? Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. I guess one other consideration for us to consider is to, historically, another reason for adding things to regular business was for the council and the city to be able to present information to the public, too. And I think we talked about this at one of our previous city council retreats and decided, based on data from our most recent community survey, that citizen or residents here in Issaquah don't typically get their information about city business from regular business, city council meetings. So another consideration for us, or I should say, I think that this discussion should be centered more on, do we think the council needs a presentation and a deliberation on this specific item? Because we can always ask the administration to produce communications content, and I'm sure they will, especially with rate impacts, to communicate with residents about the new contract, this new position. We're always doing communication work within climate goals, so I imagine there would be some overlap there, too. So anyways, wanted to make sure to bring that up. I guess I'm comfortable putting this on the consent calendar. I do feel like we had a pretty good discussion and everything was addressed in terms of what council highlighted in our, in our previous discussion. And if there are any council members who feel it is important to have a discussion about the topic, they can pull it off, the consent calendar, or they could call council leadership, and then council leadership could move that to regular business ahead of time. So that way, there's more of a warning to other council members. But that's where my head's at right now.
Councilmember DeMichele?
I'm comfortable with the consent agenda. I felt the packet that we got tonight was very informative. And then I presume we're taking minutes from this meeting, and those would go forward as well, so they'll, they'll also be able to read our discussion. Because again, I do want to call out the, the importance of carrying forward the low-income support. I also like Councilmember Joe's idea of having a plan, and I don't want to get into the contract on that, but that we do have a plan for inclement weather, that, that could be just, you know, something that we all work on. But I'd like that discussion to go forward, too, so, or that we have a record of that. So I, but if all of that information goes forward to the council, I'm comfortable with it being on the consent agenda.
I think it can be placed on the consent agenda. I think that, given the robust, robust nature of our last conversation when all seven council members were here, they may have questions, and it will be incumbent upon them to kind of take the initiative to pull those down if they felt the questions weren't fully answered. And I want to make sure that they feel free to do that if they think that more color and information needs to be added to some of the questions that they had. But I'm comfortable putting it on the consent agenda for now, with the full understanding that it may be pulled down. And, and it's not a reflection on our work necessarily, but it's just making sure that we're, we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's in this, in this process. Okay. Does that give you guidance?
That's, yes, very clear. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions on this topic that the administration needs answered?
We have all the direction that we needed. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will now move on to our next topic, which is a discussion of the TIP. And do we have? And Andrea Snyder, Deputy Administrator, are you presenting on this item?
I am looking at John Mortensen, our transportation manager. He will be presenting on this item.
Oh, we've had her, do you want a break? Oh, do you need time to set up? Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Joe, a couple of minutes break would actually be good. Our technicians need to take care of a minor technical issue.
Very good. We'll take a five-minute break and come back in at 7:40, a four-minute break. break. Okay, Owen, I think we're ready to go back on camera. Okay, we're back from our recess, and we're going to take on our next topic, which is the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. John Mortensen, Transportation Engineering Manager, is joining us. Good evening. I'll go ahead and hand it over to you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Joe. Hello, committee members. I'm John Mortensen, Transportation Engineering Manager in the Public Works Department. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide an opportunity for the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee to review, discuss, and provide feedback on the proposed Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program.
John, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we're not seeing your presentation slides.
Well, let me go back to... Yes. Share. Sorry about that. Oops, not PowerPoint, the screen one.
No, no.
No. Oh, it's the Chrome?
PowerPoint.
Whoa, I gotta open it in the app.
And Deputy Clerk, if you could move the microphone a little bit closer, just so we make sure that we're picking up the sound. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Tonight's topic is the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. As I mentioned, the purpose of this item is to give the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee the opportunity to review, discuss, and provide feedback on the proposed transportation improvements. The direction needed at tonight's meeting is feedback on the proposed improvements in the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. A little bit of the background on the item that we're discussing here tonight is, every two years, the city adopts a six-year capital improvement plan. And that's a pretty big process, where we look at the city's revenue and expenditures, and a number of categories, including transportation, parks, facilities, or utilities. And the chapter that's related to transportation is also the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Washington state law requires that public agencies, like the City of Issaquah, adopt a Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program every year, which is why we're here to discuss it and eventually have this item be adopted. The Transportation Improvement Program is largely influenced from the Mobility Master Plan that was adopted in March of 2021. One of the things that we look at when we decide which projects to put into the Transportation Improvement Program are, what are the funding sources available, both within the City of Issaquah and external grant funds, and try and really match up the improvements that the community wants and values with the funding sources that we have, in order to make the improvements for the community. I really like this exhibit here, because it shows where the Transportation Improvement Program is in relation to other documents and plans that the city has. All of it is encompassed by the city's comprehensive plan, that everything that we do in the Transportation Improvement Program needs to be in alignment with the comprehensive plan. And, as I mentioned earlier, the Transportation Improvement Program is a portion of the larger capital improvement plan. And there's lots of different planning documents that go into all of these decisions that the city makes, such as the Mobility Master Plan, the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, community engagement, traffic calming activities. And I did want to take a point to point out one thing that in our, in the packet, I included a summary of feedback from both the Transportation Advisory Board and from the Environmental Board. Just to let the council members on the committee know, the Environmental Board felt like that they wanted more extensive comments, and so I believe that they're going to be submitting a letter with more detailed comments than the summary. But, I wanted to let you guys know about that. As we look at the Transportation Improvement Program, I really like to break it out into buckets of projects, just to, this is how I sort them and view them. Those are annual projects, projects that are part of annual programs that we do every year, projects that are underway. In the Mobility Master Plan, one of the things it talked about was implementing projects that are already underway. So, the idea of when the Mobility Master Plan was adopted, wasn't to stop doing the existing work, it's to keep those projects moving forward and to completion. And so, we've got still a number of those projects. Mandated projects, which is my way of saying, projects that the city just needs to do to maintain the assets and public safety. New priority projects, those are the projects where we're really looking at implementing the prioritization in the Mobility Master Plan, and the vision for Issaquah's transportation future. And then, there's also long-term projects. Those are ones that are not on the next six years, but we keep a running list of the transportation projects that we have. And those are ones that, as time progresses, we would like to eventually implement. For the projects that are underway, I've got them listed here. The first one is Newport Way between SR 900 and Southeast 54th Street. This is a project that's primarily a non-motorized and a safety project. It is going to construct sidewalk on the southern side of Newport Way, with the exception of where the Harvey Manning Park is, in order to preserve more of the hillside. On the north side, it has a 12-foot-wide shared use path that will eventually be part of the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail that currently goes all the way from Seattle through Mercer Island to Bellevue. Bellevue's building sections of the trail to Issaquah, and this will be a portion of Issaquah as part of the trail. It also has intersection improvements, and improvements to try and reduce speed, because Newport Way was originally a state highway, and sometimes people still drive it like a state highway, and it doesn't reflect the urban setting that Issaquah now has today. The Newport Way Maple to Sunset Project is a project that will construct roundabouts at the intersections of Juniper, Holly, and Dogwood. It also will add a second southbound lane from Maple to 900 feet south of Holly, in order to reduce PM afternoon congestion. And it will also build non-motorized facilities for bicyclists and pedestrians, because Issaquah has a regional growth center where a lot of the future growth will occur. And there's really two southern gateways into the regional growth center, SR 900 being one of them, and Newport Way is the other one. And Newport Way is the only of those two quarters that really makes sense to have as a non-motorized gateway into the regional growth center, which is another part of that project. A very popular project with the community is the Northwest Mamish Road Non-Motorized Improvements Project. It's a project that will build non-motorized facilities from the neighborhood south of Lake Sumamish to the Lake Sumamish State Park. This is a project that we're just getting ready to award the design contract, where we'll have a very intensive public involvement process to identify the preferred alternative, and then design that to eventually construct this project that the community would like. And then, the final project underway is the signal poles up in the Issaquah Highlands to get those repainted. It's a project that's broken out into multiple years, including this year, to take care of that asset for the city.
Okay. We've got a question from Barb D. Michelle. Go ahead.
Thanks, John. If you could go back to the previous slide. So, my concern, as I look over these projects, and these are all great projects, but, for example, the Northwest Mamish Road Non-Motorized Improvements, we've got the funding to do the design, but I don't see any other funding source for the actual project. And so, but is it, we have to have the design first before we can start looking for funding for the rest of it? Or, can you just kind of go into the process there for how we move that project forward? Because people down in that South Culver area have been waiting for that for a long time.
Yeah. That's a really good question. And by having the design done, well, I guess the first step in the design is to come up with the preferred alternative. And once we do that, we'll have an updated cost estimate. And I think as part of the discussion is the trade-offs of, and I'm just going to throw out numbers. If we build a $15 million project, maybe we can get everything we want. And this is just me making assumptions. Don't assume 15 is the magic number. Or, maybe 8 million, we can get most of what we want. And what does the community want? What are the funding sources? But, having the project, we'll first identify the preferred alternative. That way, we can start matching funding sources. But then, once you have a project designed, it's a lot easier to get funding sources than when you just have a concept on paper. And so, it definitely helps. And knowing that what a huge priority this project is for the city, we definitely want to find a way to make it happen. Did that answer your question?
Yes. Thank you very much.
The annual projects are projects that we do every year. You really could consider them programs. They're things like the ADA Improvements Project, which is where we construct improvements in the public right-of-way, in order to remove barriers for people with disabilities. Some things that we do with that project are curb ramps. That way, people with a mobility disability can go from the sidewalk and then cross at the crosswalk. We also install audible pedestrian push buttons. So, if you're at a new traffic signal, instead of just pushing the button once to cross, push and hold it for about three seconds, and then the pedestrian push button will start talking to you. It'll tell you to wait to cross. And then, when the walk sign's on, it'll tell you to walk. And that's to help people with the visual disability. The pavement management and concrete maintenance projects, those are two projects that the City of Issaquah performs every year, in order to take care of our assets, our pavement and our concrete. And then, the Small Strategic Capital Project is a project, relatively new project. It came out of the strategic plan, with the goal to try and construct small improvements that'll make a difference for the community, and help people have mobility around the city. The mandated responsibilities, those are really most of the annual projects. These are the things that we need to do to really take care of things. And so, one of those is Black Nugget Retaining Mall. That's something that, actually, since the last time, we've been looking at a little bit more further. I don't have anything to share, but we keep looking into when that wall will need to be replaced or maintained. What do we need to do to it? But, for this TIP update, we're leaving it unchanged, but there could be changes a year from now, when we're looking at it with the capital improvement plan. Various slide repairs that we have fall under this, where we just need to get it done. And then, our work to maintain the city's bridges. In this Transportation Improvement Program, we're proposing to do some work to do a seismic upgrade to the bridge on Northwest Gilman, where it crosses Issaquah Creek. Then, the final bucket that I have of projects is the new priority projects. And we only put one in there this time, and that's the Central Issaquah Multimodal Crossing. It's a project that's been in the TIP for a while. And what we're proposing to do is a planning study to identify a preferred alternative, potential funding sources, and to work with various stakeholders like King County Metro, Sound Transit, and WashDOT, on what this crossing would look like. The options that the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee have are to modify the proposed Transportation Improvement Program, or to recommend the full council set the public hearing on June 6. The recommendation by the administration is to have the council pass a resolution adopting the 2023 to 2028 Transportation Improvement Program as proposed at the council meeting on June 20. The timing and next steps for this item, at the May Transportation Advisory Board meeting, I will be giving them an update of the discussion here, because they're really vested into knowing about the Transportation Improvement Program. At the June 6 council meeting, we're proposing a public hearing, and then to adopt the Transportation Improvement Program at the June 20 council meeting. So, reminder, the direction needing is feedback on the proposed transportation improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Mortensen. Questions from the committee? Councilmember Hall had his microphone up first.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate the work in this space. I have a question on the proposal itself. So, one of our options before us is to provide feedback on the proposed update to the TIP. But, I noticed in the packet that if we were to modify the proposal in a way, we wouldn't meet our submission deadline for the state, which is July 1, I believe. I'm just wondering if you, if staff could speak to you some of the challenges that we experienced that might have influenced. Is it showing up later in the timeline that it might have in a usual year? If you could speak to that at all? Because I think, you know, council always appreciates time to be able to offer suggestions and modifications. But, we also, our understanding of, you know, when challenges, you know, come our way, and we don't have the ability to move as quickly as we can, so.
Yeah. I would offer up a little bit later, but not that much. Usually, this is right around the time that we've done it. We really want to meet our deadline. In past years, the Transportation Improvement Program has been adopted after the deadline. We definitely want to meet the deadline. There is no penalty for not meeting it. But, we still want to meet our deadline.
Councilmember Hall, if I may add to that. This is Andrea Snyder. As John Mortensen said, we can go past the deadline. We don't want to do that. We always want to meet our state mandated deadlines. And, you know, this is, I think, something that John had said at the top of his remarks. But, typically, while we're required to do a Transportation Improvement Plan update on an annual basis, we typically use these off-years from the CIP to just do minor updates. We look to the CIP update as a much more thorough updating process of our capital improvement plan, including the Transportation Improvement Plan. So, this is kind of one of those interim years, where we really are just looking at making smaller tweaks to budget. What's realistic to come off the plan and move up on the plan, et cetera. But, we, so, just letting you know, that was kind of our thought process moving into this, that we didn't necessarily design a larger process for this update, because that's something we usually do. we usually do every other year with the CIP update. In addition to that, I would say, if there are feedback, if you do have changes, tweaks, things that we need to consider, please let us know. Don't be shy. We want to hear, we really do want to hear your feedback. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Councilmember D. Michelle.
So my question is really, well, actually, I think this is for the deputy city administrator. I have no problems with the TIP as presented, but I look at the future-year projects, and I see on that list a lot of really important projects as well. And so it's a little bit off-topic, but I think it's on-topic, and that is, do we have plans or where are we in terms of looking at our capital finance planning? And the other question is, if we approve this TIP now, does that lock us in for another two years? Or are we able to adjust that if we were to go out to the public? So those are my two questions, and probably for you more than John, so.
An excellent questions. Thank you. So as you know, we got our recommendations from the Capital Finance Community Task Force. It's a mouthful, so I always have to pause and make sure I'm getting that right. So we got the recommendations from them. The administration has been working on an implementation plan and proposal to bring back to council. One of the areas that the task force had prioritized was mobility and transportation. That was the number-one priority for them. And so we're going to, we're actually scheduled to come back to council on June, I'm sorry, June 27th, I believe it is. That's when the Committee of the Whole will be. So the administration will return to council with our proposal for how we should proceed and implement the task force recommendations, including transportation and increasing those. Among the recommendations the task force made, they had immediate, medium-term, and long-term actions to try to do more in terms of capital investments. And the proposal follows those lines from the administration. So there's going to be suggestions on things that we could do in the more immediate term that would move the needle on transportation and what you would see in the TIP, and then in the medium term as well. So we're eager to come back to city council and have that discussion.
And so are we locked in for two years or?
Yeah, thank you. I forgot that part of the question. We're not locked in. The TIP, as you know, is a planning document. It's not a budgetary document either. And so while you even see revenue sources assigned to different projects, that's something that, still, there needs to be another approval process to budget for those items. And so this really is a planning document. As we move forward, there could be things that we decide to move up in the years. That's really something that council finalizes and adopts with the budget process. So this is our planning document. This is our best guess from where we sit today, but there are going to be more conversations with council and with the community about our transportation investments moving forward.
Deputy President Hall.
Thank you for that response. And that Committee of the Whole meeting will include a conversation about our approach for spending ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act dollars as well, because those are included for some design and planning or planning work for TR 003, the multimodal I-90 crossing project. So if council has a deliberative conversation and wants to have a different approach for those ARPA dollars, we would simply revisit that planning number the next year as part of the full CIP update. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. And we would revisit it not only next year with the larger CIP update, but also when it comes to budget time, so this fall. So, but yes, that's the plan. It's kind of a sneak preview to what's in some of the administration's proposal, but certainly it doesn't lock council into anything necessarily to adopt that tonight because it is planning document meant to guide our actions, but isn't the final action.
Great, thank you. I also had a question about TR 003, the multimodal I-90 crossing. Could you add just a little bit of color to it? Where are we potentially connecting over I-90? And as a planning document, how does it work or tie into the potential terminus for Sound Transit that's coming in 2043 or 4 or 5? Is there, are those two projects connected in any way?
Fantastic question. And I would love, I guess, the community engagement and the stakeholder engagement will drive a lot of it. So I guess to answer the first question for the location, the crossing would be within Isqwa's Regional Growth Center, which I don't have a map of with me to show you, but it'd be within there, I'm going to say most likely either at Maple to Lake would be a location that would make sense, or 12th to 11th. So 12th on the southern end, 11th on the northern end. But I don't want to eliminate potential alternatives, things that we would look at. Should the crossing go over the freeway or under the freeway? And what would be the impacts on land use? Because if we went over the freeway, we're using a lot more land than if we were to go under the freeway. And then work with Sound Transit, because in a lot of ways, it makes sense to have the Sound Transit Light Rail Station at this crossing. So what would a crossing that would incorporate a light rail station? Work with metro and Sound Transit. How would the bus transfers work from the buses onto the train? And then for vehicles, for dropping off at the light rail station and the bicycles and the pedestrians, and how all of that would work? And what can we and can't, we do at I-90, because that is owned by the WashDOT? And so it's a really exciting project. Lots of things that we need to get sorted out with this planning study, but I think it could be a landmark transportation project for the city.
I would only add one thing to that, which is that in our conversations with Sound Transit on Isqwa's future light rail station, we understand that they seem to have an early conceptual preference for a station that's aligned with I-90. So something that could be really compatible with what we're talking here with the under-over crossing possibility. Of course, all of those options and alternatives need to be properly vetted and examined, and we really think that this study is a good first step to that and would really prepare us for those conversations with Sound Transit.
That's great to hear. Thank you. I also had a question on, a number of the items were put back in time a little bit because of the unavailability of staff capacity to complete this work before 2024. Certainly, it's a challenging employment market. I know that there was some discussion of potentially trying to find another transportation engineer, and this may be more of a budget question than a question for us tonight. Is that going to be, is the administration going to be trying to do that before the budget? Or is this going to be a discussion that we have later in the fall?
So you're asking for all of the sneak previews that are, you know, hidden content for the July 27th meeting, or June 27th meeting, rather. But it is, it is something that we are really looking into, is how do we add staff capacity? Because we've heard from the task force and members of council that we want to do more when it comes to mobility. And really, staffing is a constraint right now, as you can see. And so that is something that I look forward to, the discussion of that at a future date.
Thank you very much. Okay. Other questions from the committee? Councilmember D. Michelle.
Sorry. The only question I had was on the bridge, the Gilman Bridge, and I know that it's been evaluated for seismic stability. Has it had any other kinds of evaluations? And are we assured that that bridge is sound, other than needing a seismic refit?
Yes. We had, as part of the 2022 work plan, we did an evaluation on the Gilman Bridge. It did come back that we need to post a load rating sign for heavy emergency vehicles, so the heavier fire engines. And we're working with Eastside Fire and Rescue to try and identify what, if any, of their vehicles would meet that criteria. So we have the seismic on that bridge and the heavy loading. So there will be a load rating sign going up pretty soon on the Gilman Bridge.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions from the committee? All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Deputy Clerk, is there anyone online that may want to comment on the TIP this evening?
Councilmember Joe Connie Marsh is online and would like to give public comment. Connie, I have made you a panelist. You can unmute and also turn on your video.
Okay, I am unmuted and turning on my video. And I did see, what, a three-piece suit earlier? Anyway, I'm Connie Marsh. So it's hard to even know how to deal with the complexity of transportation in this conversation. What it seems like is the Transportation Advisory Board and the Master Mobility Plan have funneled down to the council in a very simplistic, you get a choice of these projects for the six-year TIP. And I guess I feel like the conversation is missing about how to choose the projects in a changing world where we can no longer afford to use single occupancy vehicles for the future for climate action in a variety of reasons. And the Master Mobility Plan sort of showcases that, but it has not been brought along to the community because they're, they want to be, like, driving their cars. And for the most part, our TIP still accommodates single occupancy vehicles more than it does anything that is multimodal. And these TIP projects, for the most part, continue that trend. So I guess I want to know when we're going to have that, that public education and council moment or realization where we say, we have a transportation problem that can't be solved by cars. And so, while the city in one hand seems to be going that direction, it didn't follow through in this presentation to you. And that's a little confusing to me. In the past, you would have gotten the whole TIP with all of the future lists, and you would have gotten options as to all the different projects that you might prioritize one over the other, and then you would have had that conversation. So you've been, you've been sort of funneled. And I don't know, is that bad? Is that good? I just wanted to bring it up so that you were aware of all of the other things that were happening behind. And now there's a parallel track where we're doing Title 18 updates. And so when I read the code for the Title 18 updates, it says, we are going to have a certain grid system, and we're going to have paths, and we're going to have sidewalks. But every time I ask the question of, well, how do we get the people across the street so they can actually walk? They tell me, that is not us. That is the transportation group. So when you are looking at the TIP and you're looking at Title 18, I have yet to understand how we're going to get this web of multimodal transportation that can actually just, actually get across the street instead of going down the street and never crossing. It's missing at this point in time. I wanted to make you aware of that. There does not seem to be a moment on the city council agenda where that topic can elegantly come through so that you could make decisions to ensure that we are able to actually safely cross the street. Like with Newport Way, way down in engineering, we'll figure out whether they're actually going to let you cross the street along Newport Way, because we have huge parts of Newport Way where you can't get across the street, right? So if we want to gain our mobility master plan or our master mobility plan, we are going to have to change our way of doing business and make sure that our land use planning and our transportation elegantly combine to create the system that we need to get people out of their cars. So I just feel like that conversation is, is, is missing. And I don't know that tonight is the night to have it, but I want to put it in your brains, and this is the first place that I could get it. I don't have particular problems with the projects that they're putting out. I personally don't think they are the most important problems. I think the lack of sidewalks on Squawk Mountain so that people have to walk with cars, getting up and down the hill, is, in some cases, more important than allowing cars to go better on Newport Way. But there, there you go. I don't know that you've been provided the opportunity to switch out one project to the other. I don't know how to make it better either. So you can see, I'm not here with answers this time, which is very strange, but I do have a lot of questions for you to ponder. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie Marsh. Appreciate it. Deputy Clerk, any other people online that have comments or wish to speak?
No, Councilmember Joe, there are no other attendees online.
Great, thank you. Anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? I see Mr. Midill.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to comment on a few things, just as.
We know you really well, but could you identify yourself and just let us know where you live and your connection to the city?
Julia Midill, a resident of Isqwa, on Squawk Mountain. I just wanted to make a couple of comments in my personal capacity, even though I am a member of Transportation Advisory Board. I think a lot of the projects that are looking at being funded in that list of really short-term projects to 2028, I think there's an inevitability about those projects. For example, the Newport Way project is federally funded, so it would be kind of silly to relinquish those federal funds. But I'm pretty dissatisfied by the way it expands road capacity. And so I think the moment for us to change that direction is through the future-year projects. And I'm very dissatisfied by those future-year projects, especially when it comes to those road expansion, road interchange projects such as Front Street Interchange. That particular project, for example, just does not make any sense to me. As it is right now, that road is very dangerous for someone who's biking or for someone who's walking and making it a diverging diamond, as I've seen in previous plans in 2018. That whole visioning process, I think, would make it even less safe. And there's a few other road winding projects that really need strict scrutiny in terms of planning in the future years. So I think that's where city council should be putting a lot of interest in and focus in and really interrogating the premise of those projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that might want to give public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to the next part of the discussion, which is council deliberations. Councilmember D. Michelle.
So first of all, as I said, I don't have any issues with the current list of projects on the Transportation Improvement Plan. But I think Connie and Julian's comments are well-taken. I think one of the. I think one of the problems we have with developing transit solutions in a Transportation Improvement Plan is that this is a capital plan. And a lot of what happens with transit is not capital-driven, it's operations-driven, it's buses on the streets, and then you have to have streets in order to have the buses. So it's, Ms. Marsh and I have had this discussion before, what exactly would we invest in to help improve transit in our area? And that is where, she said she didn't have any answers, and I don't have any answers either. So other than how do we make it easier for people to take buses? And how do we make it easier for buses to get around? And I know we're working on that in terms of how we serve our mountainous areas in Issaquah through shuttles and things like that. So I think that it, however, I think it is a discussion that we need to have as a council. Are we really working toward the goals of the Master Mobility Plan, which really has a heavy transit emphasis in walking and bicycle routes and so forth? And some of those projects are in the future plans that Julian pointed out. But they're not funded, and they're not even on the Transportation Improvement Plan. So those are discussions I think we need to have. I think the difficulty is what kind of capital investments can we make that are really going to make a difference? And so that's a discussion that we need to continue to have. But I like the buckets that you put those into, John, because I think that really lays it out. There's some things we're mandated to do, there's some things that we want to do on an annual basis, like the, I'm very strongly in support of the pavement improvement program and those kinds of maintenance things that really make a difference to how people get around and that they have an easy way of walking on the sidewalks and things like that. So I think we've done a good job of putting investments into those areas. So at this point, I'm comfortable sending it forward. I just think, I agree with Connie and Julian, we need further discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Councilmember Hall. Deputy Council President Hall, sorry.
I'm not a council member, I'm a deputy council member. No. No, thank you. Thank you to our public commentators, too. I just jotted out some comments because you made me think of a few books I've been reading about mobility and the sense of urgency that cities need to be tackling with regard to urbanism. So I'll get to that in a second. But overall, I'm happy with the recommendation that the administration has for us. And the feedback that, you know, these interim years when we're not passing the overall capital improvement plan are really more for small tweaks and minor updates to projects that we have going through. For example, I did appreciate the alignment of project descriptions with the Mobility Master Plan and keeping that in mind and ensuring that we're as competitive as we can be for the grant process, too. I think the ARPA funding, the leaked proposal that we got from the administration on the ARPA funding approach for the central Issaquah multimodal I-90 crossing is interesting. It's an interesting one, and it'd be certainly a big chunk of the ARPA funding. So I'm interested in exploring that. I guess we'll see where the council goes. I'm fine with it staying and not making any adjustments to the TIP with regard to that. I want to thank the Transportation Advisory Board and the Environmental Board for providing their comments and for staff for summarizing those comments for us. And I, from what I understand, in your presentation, the Environmental Board will be providing more thorough comments via email to us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. For that reason, then I think it might be more appropriate for this to sit on a regular business item at the upcoming city council meeting, so that way we can kind of discuss if there are any new developments based on those comments. But I appreciate the heads up on that. I mean, yeah, the Mobility Master Plan, it envisions this range of mobility options for our residents and acknowledges that we need to do a whole lot more to get people out of their cars for a lot of reasons that have positive benefits on people's lives and the environment. I think Connie brings up really good points about the Mobility Master Plan alignment with our TIP process structurally. Is that working? And how do we change, how do we, and do we need to change the way that we do business as usual? But more importantly, you know, how are we approaching the conversation, maybe not more importantly, but in addition, how are we approaching the conversation with the community? And is the community aware of this bold new vision? Is the community aware of emerging policy in transportation and in mobility? I think perhaps this might be a good discussion to have at a community listening session to kind of set the stage of the Mobility Master Plan and then have a focused conversation on mobility. And then perhaps, I can't, I'm not sure what the schedule for committee of the whole meetings are, or if we even have these kinds of broad conversations at committee of the whole meetings again, but it might be a good conversation there. And if not, perhaps this is something council leadership could work to include at a future retreat to talk about approaches in terms of what council actions could be in alignment with our Mobility Master Plan and in alignment with the urgency of the moment that we're in. So I, just like Councilmember D. Michelle, don't have the answers here and have much more questions than answers, but definitely important to ponder, and ponder we shall. Julian, I think you bring up good points, too. I think another question for us to consider in this alignment conversation between the TIP process, the CIP process, and the Mobility Master Plan is, are we prioritizing road widening projects more than we should be from a policy perspective of council? You know, are we ignoring, not ignoring is the right word, but I'll use it for now, ignoring our responsibilities to good urbanism in the Mobility Master Plan in future years? And what is the council's urgency here? So again, just providing some comments because I think we do need to have kind of a high-level conversation from council to set. I mean, the Mobility Master Plan is our policy, it is our North Star with regard to mobility policy here in Issaquah. But perhaps we need to have a more focused conversation on how we align that with how we do business. And those are my comments. Otherwise, I'm fine with the TIP as it is right now. It is just housekeeping in these interim years. So thank you for all your hard work on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd also reiterate the comments that Deputy Council President Hall made, thanking you, Mr. Wardinson, and for all of your hard work, and the administration for making sure that you're being thoughtful about the projects that are coming and how we can connect those together with potential funding or making them as, you know, as, making them very acceptable or very enticing for our partners on the county and state level and federal level to help fund those projects. And it does come down to putting that plan down first so we have a vision that we're behind, and then going out and selling that vision for that funding. So I do appreciate that foresight that you're putting forward in these plans. I don't have any real concerns about any changes for this. We are, as has been pointed out, pretty limited in what we can do. I would just encourage the administration to continue to look for those opportunities where, because we're out in the community, because we're hearing community conversations, there might be an opportunity to get that $50,000 that might just be, you know, a one-time county thing that we just happen to read about and apply for that can make a big difference in one little area of our town. You know, and I know that you're constantly looking out for those opportunities in your conversations. And we, as council members, are also having conversations with our fellow council members and the other bodies that we touch in terms of the State House or whether it's other city councils or county council out there. So it's all a team effort, and we all need to be aware of the opportunities out there. And maybe something will break our way that can help make a difference. So the options that the administration was asking for feedback on was modify the proposed TIP, and it sounds like we're okay with the item as is. And then they were asking if we are comfortable with recommending the full council set the public hearing for this item for June 6th. And want to make sure that I've captured all the questions that the administration has? Okay. Are we comfortable with June 6th, then, for setting a public hearing and letting the community give their feedback on what they've heard and what they've read? Okay. Fantastic.
Councilmember Joe, if I may, I just wanted to provide a little bit more information on what you can expect for that date. Because I think the materials are going to look just a little bit different from what you've seen tonight, and I didn't want there to be any surprises. Based off of some of the comments that we've heard from the Environmental Board, and we're, they're going to be providing a letter, but just kind of what's been communicated so far, I would like for us to better address some of their concerns in the materials. And so usually what you see in these committee meetings is often the materials kind of move forward relatively unchanged to the next meeting. They'll incorporate an update from what occurred at the meeting, but otherwise be pretty much the same. I think in this case, I want to make sure that our materials really address the feedback that we've heard and that we're anticipating we'll hear over the next couple of weeks leading to that public hearing. So in particular, what we've heard from the Equity, I'm sorry, the Environmental Board, is that they want to make sure that we're addressing some of the bike, pet, and other mobility options and not just encouraging single occupant vehicles. And so I want to be more explicit with how some of these projects in the TIP work to address that versus current conditions. And also concerns of safety and how some of these projects really address safety. You don't always get that in these high-level summaries. And so I just want to be able to provide more information to address some of those specific concerns. And I think we've been talking, the Capital Finance Community Task Force has been talking, provided recommendations around the CIP process and maybe making some changes to that, taking a look at those criteria that are used. I think we need to fold that into the discussion for the big update next year when we look at, how do we better infuse the policies that have been adopted through the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, also the Equity Framework that we're about to receive? And so I think we'll be seeing some differences there that we can incorporate into the next big update to the CIP-TIP. So I wanted to share that with you and preview some of those changes with you in response to some of the feedback that we've heard.
Thank you very much. I'll look forward to reviewing that. It's going to be nice to see how we try to incorporate all these different elements that the citizens have told us are important to them. So before we close the meeting, I would just, as a point of personal privilege, like to thank the council members for a good meeting where we had a robust discussion. I think the committee structure is designed so that we can talk about these items at a little bit more informal setting, hear comments from citizens, and be able to have a little bit more of a conversation than we are able to in some of the other more formal meetings. So I appreciate your willingness to have that informal conversation. I think it's going to be helpful for our work and helps the citizens understand what we're doing and the work that we're trying to have moved forward. So I appreciate your work tonight. With that, there's nothing else for the good of the order. We are adjourned.